Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we've got a party for you. I am joined today by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hey, guys.
Hello.
We also have Julie and Colin from our team. What's up, guys?
Hey, everybody.
And we have a very special guest today, Janelle Bass. Hi, Janelle. And as you're coming in, we want to know where you are in the world and what you're up to today. Maybe let's do something a little different. What are you grateful for today? Let us know in the comments. Excited to hear from you. Let me open up my chat here so I can see. All right, yeah, you guys, come on, let us know where you are in the world. And then tell us one thing that you are grateful for today. We're excited to have you here. So if you're brand new and you've never been here before, or if you're watching this as a recording, welcome. This is a live call that we host every single Thursday at noon Eastern time here in the US. But this is a call for anyone in the whole world who is a Young Living brand partner. We are Get Oiling. We do have a suite of software tools to help you manage and grow your Young Living business and to incorporate your lead generation and any other offers that you need on the front end. Lots of folks use us for a lot of different reasons. And if you watch our YouTube channel, you'll see a lot of different and interesting use cases for us. But that said, what we really love doing and where our heart is and what we do is serving this community, serving Team YL. And so we are here today with a very special guest who's going to be sharing her, and I'm going to coin this for you, Janelle, I can't wait for you to like tell me that this is not right. Her stress-free journey to Silver. So Janelle has worked with us since she was Senior Star and of course, has reached the rank of Silver. And she's going to be sharing a lot of really great information with you today about how she shifted her mindset, or maybe she was just blessed with it. We'll learn more about that here today. But she's got some really valuable perspective to share with us that can help you with overwhelm, if you ever feel like you're overcome with perfectionism, with overwhelm and things like this that tend to get in our way of our growth. So before we get into that, we do have a couple of very exciting announcements to make. So this is the month of July. And we actually have, going into the summer, a promotion that we usually run. And around then, there's convention here in North America. There's usually aromas sharing tied to that. And we do a giveaway, and that giveaway is for a bottle of rose oil. We've done that every year for the past, I don't know, five or more. And then we also, this year, are giving away an actual coaching package where you're going to have a one-page website done as well as a one-on-one with me for strategy, so that you get all of this taken care of. So who would like to know who won these prizes? Let us know in the chat. Raise your hands. Are you excited to know who won? So I'm going to turn this over to Greg, who is going to share with us. Maybe let's do, what do we want to do first? Do we want to do the rose oil first, or do we want to know who got the done-for-you website giveaway? Yes, let's go high-frequency rose oil. All right, what do we want to know first? Who, who, who? Who, which one? Does it matter? Okay, let's just, let's do it all. All right, Greg, turning it over to you.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Yeah, so here's the bottle of rose oil that's going to be given away to our lucky winner here.
Here's your drum kit. We need a drum roll, right?
Ready? On my desk.
Perfect. Yeah, so I'm excited to announce that it's Elisa McClure, who actually looks like she's on the call today. We could bring her up if we wanted to, if she's open to that, so.
Elisa, if you'd like to talk, yeah, Elisa, if you want to talk, raise your hand and you can say hi. But you don't have to. It's up to you. There you go. Hi, yes, let's do it. Hey, Elisa, congratulations.
Hi, everyone. I'm so excited. It's amazing. I was so shocked and in awe and absolutely. You know, rose oil is one of the things that I buy one bottle of rose oil every year. But here it is, July, and I have not purchased a bottle of rose oil yet. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. Fantastic. Well, we appreciate you. And yeah, we'll be in touch to get that information to send it out.
Send us your mailing address and we'll get it in the mail as soon as we can.
I will do that. Thank you.
Congrats.
Absolutely. All right. And now I have like that background thing on Zoom where like it'll mute dogs barking and stuff. So like, I'm like banging on my desk here and it's just not drum-rolling.
We need another drum roll.
Imagine a drum roll. Um, let's, let's see who won our website giveaway. Who's going to have their website designed and a consult with me to help get it done?
Yeah, it's a one-page custom website design and that one-on-one session with Ashley. It goes to Cindy Grant, who I don't see here in the list unless she's under a different name. So Cindy, if you're here, certainly raise your hand or let me know. But yeah, congrats on that. We'll be reaching out with more information on how to get set up with a link and all that. So we're super excited. I took a picture of your website. You're using one of the built-in Get Oiling themes. So I think hopefully this will be a really valuable addition to your website and your Get Oiling system. So congrats.
Absolutely. We're so excited to work with you. I noticed that you are a holistic practitioner as well. Good news. I've got experience with working with people just like you to plug things into the system and make it work beautifully for all sides of your business and so that it leads to Get Oiling beautifully. So, or at least to Young Living beautifully. So yeah, congratulations. We're so excited to work with you. All right, great job, winners. You guys, if you want to enter to win, we typically do this rose oil giveaway around conventions. So just keep an eye out. There are ways for you as an existing customer to enter and win. Of course, Elisa has been with us for years. And she made a referral which gave her 10 points, like 10 entries to win. So she increased her chances there by referring someone in her network. So just keep an eye out. Next time we do this, you know, it's so cool to see folks winning. So let's talk about winning and how we can position ourselves to get a little bit more win in our day. Maybe work on our mindset so that we can really ready ourselves for that. I want to introduce you guys to a really special guest that we have here today. We actually, we've got this thing that we do in our system that Greg came up with, which is absolutely brilliant. And that's, you know, we send you an email when you've got an anniversary with us. And Greg sent out an email saying, you know, hey, happy second anniversary with us, Janelle. And she sent back just the most amazing write-up of how using our system has impacted how she runs her business. And after reading it, like, we just, we couldn't not share with you guys, right? Because I mean, how many of us here today have struggled with feeling stuck or overwhelmed or feeling like you have to have everything done exactly right in a certain way before you can move forward? Have you ever felt that way? You guys, we're going to connect you today to a path forward that releases you from that. And I'm so excited here to welcome Janelle Bass to share her story with you. So hi, Janelle, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here and just grateful that you think that I can bring some value to you guys. And I was thinking about all of you that are here on this call, knowing that there would be people here that are committed to growing their business. You're here because you have a vision. And I think that's so admirable. And the fact that you're here on this call tells me that you are committed and that you can do it and that you can move forward. So I'm really excited to just share a little bit. So I have been using Get Oiling, like Ashley said, for two years. And it really has transformed my business. As my business has expanded, I've needed features to effectively serve people. Because how many of you want to serve people here? I mean, this is what we do, right? We're here, we're showing up in service for others. But I knew that if I wanted to be able to grow my business and to be successful, I needed to serve people sustainably. And so I knew that I needed some systems. And I'm really not a systems person. I'm not somebody that gets excited about writing down goals and breaking them down and, you know, making lists and worksheets and all that kind of stuff. That does not, that does not excite me. That's not my personality. So I needed something that I was going to be able to build slowly that I could utilize just the pieces that I needed in time allotments that were realistic to me. So every time I've needed a feature, I see you guys saying, this sounds like me too. I am so glad that I'm not the only one, and I hope that I can share some tips with you today. Anytime I've needed a feature, like I wanted to do an event, I wanted to do registrations or sending an email, writing a blog post, that feature is already inside of Get Oiling. And it has been a huge time saver for me to have all of these things inside of one portal to manage everything. It has given me back a lot of time in my family. So one thing that I really wanted to share with you guys today is that something that I learned early on in Get Oiling. And honestly, about myself, like this applies across many facets of life, is just that because, just because you have so many things available, doesn't mean that you have to utilize them all. And it doesn't mean you have to utilize them all at one time. When using, with using Get Oiling, like I said, I've been using it from, like Ashley shared, from Senior Star, Executive and then the Silver. I've used different pieces of it at different times. And even now as a Silver, sometimes I use less pieces of it than other times. It just depends on what you need. And I just want to also add, this is a side note, it's not in my notes, but I don't consider myself more successful today as a Silver. And I'm not more successful today as a Silver than I was as an Executive or a Senior Star or a Star or when I became a distributor. What, how I define success for myself is serving people in a sustainable way. And so I think we're all here, that we're all successful here. And this has helped me to be able to do that as my business has grown in number. So Get Oiling has been, I kind of approach it like a salad bar. I can choose what's right for me, how much of each thing is right for me. Next time, if I want to try something else, I can go back and try something else. It's all waiting for me. So when I began using Get Oiling, I really just wanted a website. And I wanted a place to hold all of my customers and like a little database that I could tag them. Like, for example, I have a lot of people who are teachers. And I want to be able to tag all my teachers and send an email out offering something there's around, you know, school time and not have to go through and send individual, that kind of thing. I want to be able to target them with classes and information that would be valuable to them. Keep notes on them because the notebook thing was kind of getting out of control. And I needed somewhere where I could keep it online. And I have a lot of stuff in my brain. How many of you have like 50,000 tabs in your brain? I have tabs on, I, people make fun of me anytime I take a screenshot because there's like 47 tabs open on my browser. And my husband's always telling me like, you're slowing down your computer. Like, you just have to do that. But my brain looks exactly like my computer, my web browser, right? And so we all have like a lot of things going on. It can be challenging for me to remember who I spoke to about skincare and then who I spoke to about like colon cleansing, okay? And I don't want to send the colon cleansing recipe to the girl who wants skincare, okay? So I needed something and to hold my customers and keep track of them with notes and things like that. And so that was what I went to Get Oiling for. I uploaded all my people into Get Oiling and, you know, followed the step-by-step instructions, uploaded them all, and then I had everyone there. And I could slowly start adding information as I talked to them on the phone, as they texted me, as they came to classes, as I saw them post on Facebook, whatever. So all that to say, we talked about the success. We talked about serving people sustainably. And so I want to share a little bit of how my process has been through Get Oiling to get the most out of it for me. So I began using it, like I said, as a website with one landing page and for what my customer management. Then later, I used how to, I learned how to use the email feature and began sending emails like with valuable recipes and then like, you know, stuff like that out to my people. Then one day, I thought, you know, it would be great to like send a text message to everyone in my area and invite them to a class. Let me see if Get Oiling had that. It did. It was in there. I used help button, figured out how to send them a text. And sadly, business has grown. If slowly, one piece at a time, use the features on an as-needed basis. Now, when I sit down to do something and I start to feel like overwhelmed working on a project, and it can be within my business or it can be somewhere in my home or anything that I want to, you know, set up. If I want to sit down and I'm like, I'm going to set up something through Get Oiling and I'm feeling overwhelmed, that's usually my cue that I'm looking at too big of a picture and biting off more than I can chew. Have you ever sat down to work on a project and just been like totally overwhelmed? And oh, I should add this and then, oh, I should add that. And then, and then, you know, you kind of just add a little bit of everything and then there's nothing finished. And so then you walk away feeling very defeated and like you didn't accomplish anything, right? I know this has happened to me many of times. I can chew a cookie in small bites, but it's easy to, but it's, but it's hard to stick like a whole Oreo in your mouth and chew the whole thing, right? It's going to take longer to eat that Oreo and it's going to be uncomfortable and it's going to make a mess. Or I can break into small little pieces and move forward. And this isn't, this is something that is talked about a lot in like mindset and goal-setting and business and stuff. It's like, take your plan and write down little pieces in order. I'm going to tell you right now, I have never done that. I've never sat down and went, I'm going to do this first and then this second and this third because that for me would overwhelm me. And a lot of times, the path doesn't end up the way that we, that we plan, right? So what I've decided to do is I've decided to simply begin and do a small piece of something functional that works. That is more important for forward-moving in your business, creating something that's functional than an elaborate, like fancy automated machine, which Get Oiling can absolutely do. But that can take a while to create and there's a learning curve for anyone on any system, right? So for example, I love landing pages in Get Oiling. I make them, I use them, they've been great for me. But creating a landing page and setting up a campaign for people to opt into is a few steps. And it takes a little bit of learning the first couple of times. So I'm going to tell you a story of how I hacked this process using another one of Get Oiling's features for the same results in a super-functional way. And it's super simple. One day, I put a post on my Facebook Wellness, you know, lead group I called Wearing Wellness. It was just about how I use natural recipes in my nebulizer machine for myself and my children. There's a photo of my toddler smiling through his little fishy nebulizer mask. And I said, we love using natural things in this nebulizer and stuff. It blew up and over 12 people personally messaged me and asked me to send me their recipes. So automatically, my brain is like, I need, oh, shoot, I need a blog post. And I need to go take some more pictures of my nebulizer, lay it out with oils and do like a flat lay. And then I need an Amazon affiliate LinkedIn, nebulizer, and I need a printable recipe card. And the opt-in, the asking for the email, the download, and I should schedule a Zoom class about lung health and like, all this stuff, right? But that wasn't going to provide value to people in the moment that they needed it. And it wasn't going to be something that was sustainable for me at that time. I didn't have the time and I didn't want people to have to wait. I needed to get it done in 15 minutes or less and just have something functional and valuable. So I wanted to Get Oiling and I typed up a save reply email, which is one of my favorite features in Get Oiling. And I typed up the simple recipes, added an affiliate link. And anyone that asked me to send it to them, I sent it to them that way. There are no graphics in this reply. There aren't no photos in this reply. I told people, yeah, shoot me your email and I will email you the list and send you the recipes. Done. I have sent this save reply over 30 times. It's led to two new, brand-new partners and multiple current partners placing like fresh orders, new orders, asking me about this and that and the other. And people are messaging me back all the time about how it's helped them and their children. No photos, no fancy buttons, none of that. And again, I love all that. But when we're starting and trying to move forward, we can get overwhelmed with wanting things to be log-worthy and beautiful. And people really need the information that we have. And I'm still using this saved reply. It's what we call around here, Get Oiling Evergreen. It's just an email with information, right? So here's a little secret. The first nebulizer email I sent that day was like super simple. Like I said, I think, here's the link to the nebulizer. Hope this helps you. Please let me know. A couple of days later, that, you know, that post was kind of recirculating and getting rejected. But I went back into Get Oiling where my save reply was. I pulled up the save reply and I added a little bit more info. I wanted to add like some essential oil topical recipes and I added some more. And then like another time, I thought, oh, you know, I probably have a couple of minutes to make a quick printable, like a one-sheet Word document, type it up. I resisted the urge to make it super fancy. I have a lot, a lot of things in my background. One of my backgrounds, graphics. I was so, I'm going to go make it beautiful and like all these things. And I was like, no, I'm going to do this fast. I'm going to get this done, right? And I just picked it all up, saved it as a PDF and added that so that people could print it without waiting, wasting a lot of ink, right? There are still no graphics and no fancy nothing inside that save reply. And I probably send that out to people about once a week at least. I think that we often have this false belief that if we can't show up and present ourselves in a certain way, then we can't show up at all. My grandma had a lot of little proverbs she'd always tell me. She'd always be like, a penny saved is a penny earned. And like, one time, I accidentally threw a penny away in the trash and I thought about it for weeks. I was like, oh, my gosh, I, I mean, like she had all these cute little things she would say. And something she always said was, anything worth doing is worth doing well. And I appreciate my grandma because I know her heart and she is such, she's so precious to me. But for years, I misinterpreted what she meant. I took that to mean anything worth doing is worth doing perfectly or it's not worth doing at all. How many of you feel that way sometimes? Have you ever felt that way before? If I can't do it perfectly, the way that I want it to look, the way that I feel it should look, then I'm not going to do it at all. That's the lie. If we're operating in a lie, then it's going to block us from moving forward. This is how I can, I can spot a lie. And the more that you spot lies, the better you get at it. This is one of the ways that I can spot. If I know that I'm operating in a lie, when, when I'm trying to move forward in something that I know is important and something that's a vision and something that is of value and something that, you know, is, is my heart's desire, just like you have those hearts desires and those visions. And it feels like you're in those dreams where you're trying to move, but you don't get anywhere. It feels like walking in a lazy river in the wrong direction, right? It's like you're working, but you're not going anywhere. When you're operating in a truth, you're moving forward. It's action, it's, it's work, but you have a sense of like ease. It's like walking up an escalator, like it's, it's still like, you know, burning your thighs a little bit, but you're getting some traction and you're going somewhere and there's this sense of ease in the work. The truth propels us and lies slow us down. So as we've, as I've started to be, as I've used this system a little bit at a time and applied this idea that, that little pieces that I can do well are worth doing and keeping things functional, right? And going towards function and value instead of beauty and what I think it should look like. Now I can look at Grandma saying with fresh eyes and look at it and say, anything worth doing is worth doing well, okay? So I want to do this amazing thing with these nebulizer recipes. I can't do that right now. Can I draft a short email well right now? Can I write three sentences really well? I have about 20 minutes to work. What if I only have five minutes? Can I start a save reply and Get Oiling and just name it and save it empty? I can start a save reply well. I can complete that piece. I can start it. One of the things I love about the Get Oiling entire system is that I can save things and come back to them. And so sometimes when I have an idea, like for a landing page or a blog post or whatever, I'll go into Get Oiling, I'll open up a page or I'll open up a landing page or I'll open up a save reply and I'll just name it and save it with nothing inside. But guess what? I just started a blog post well. It's worth doing. And I did it well. I completed a task. It's ready for me when I come back to do the next piece and the next piece. So once I realized that I could free myself from this perfection and creating like this ideal brand, like we can do that over time. But instead, I started to lean into what I could realistically contribute to the people that I serve, that functions, that gives value. And then I was able to move forward in my business with much more peace and much more calm. I want to make things that are beautiful and add value and are professional. But you know what? A lot of times when we're spinning our wheels, making things look a certain way or really elaborate, that's actually about me. It's about my brand. Because I want my brand to be this and that. Like, I want people to look at Janelle. I think we all feel this sometimes, right? Or maybe I'm the only one, but I want people to see me a certain way. I have a way that I perceive myself that I think I, I want them to think certain things about me. We all kind of do that, right? And when I'm not giving something that I have to people because it needs to look a certain way or feel a certain way, I'm actually cooperating with perfectionism and perfectionism is selfish. It says, I want things to be a certain way or not at all. It's taking Grandma's proverb and twisting it around in something it was never supposed to mean. Why do we do this to ourselves and our businesses? Would you buy a great book and say, you know what, that book is 350 pages? It's going to take me like four hours to read it. So I'm not going to read that book until I have four uninterrupted hours for it. Or are you going to read it a couple of pages at a time till it gets, till you get to the end? What if you never finish it? If you read half of it, did you extract some value from half that book? I bet you probably did, right? I love spending time with my husband in the morning and drinking our organic coffee, right? A little bit of collagen snuck in there. I like to have an hour to talk with him and give each other our attention and chat. Like, we have four small children, right, in our house? And so we only get about 15 minutes usually. Should I say to him, oh, we can't have our hour, so just forget it. I'm not going to spend, you know, any time with you because I can't have it look like I want it to look. Or should I say, let's take this 15 minutes and, and make it great? And let's enjoy our coffee and make that 15 minutes we have count. This approach, instead of approaching things with perfectionism, this approach is an approach of excellence. This says, I'm going to contribute something with what I have. So I'm going to take what's available to me and make it count. I'm going to suggest to you that you're already applying this principle to your life without even realizing it, like in our book example, like time with your spouse, like time with your children, time with your friends. It's time to apply it to your business. Let's see what we can do well, what small steps we can take to move forward. When I am working on something that I want to provide to people, I will take whatever idea I have and trim it down and trim it down and trim it down and trim it down and go, what is the simplest tool inside of Get Oiling? That I can provide this information to people with. And that is the one that I choose to go forward with and it has served me so well. So I have three tips to kind of tie in everything I shared. And then I'm going to, I think, take some questions and see if we can chat back and forth a little bit. But here are my three top tips for getting going in Get Oiling. Ready? One is, when you have an idea, decide to start well today. That can look like making a memo in your phone. That can look like making the title of a product you want to create in Get Oiling and saving it blank inside of Get Oiling, like a landing page or a blog post. It can be typing a simple save reply, bare bones, they fluff it later, right? But bare bones, ready. So the second thing that I'm going to recommend to you for getting going in Get Oiling is rejecting perfectionism and leaning into excellence. Ask yourself, am I doing this to present myself a certain way? Or am I doing this to contribute value? And then my third tip for getting going Great Oiling, Get Oiling is to choose the simplest way to get to the destination, whatever it is you're trying to provide, and make that. You can add to it later. You can fluff it and beautify it later. But make something functional and provide it to people. They deserve the truth right now. So I hope that that resonates with you a little bit. I hope that this frees you and empowers you to know that you can do things well in this system and across all avenues of your life. And I'd love to keep chatting with you while we're here.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much for that. So real quick, can, can we revisit this perfectionism piece for a second here, right? There was something that you had shared with us in your notes previously. It was a revelation that you had when you realized that, that this sort of focus on perfectionism was making it about you, right? And that's not why we're here.
Right. And it puts pressure, I mean, there's always a temptation to make it about you. Like even coming on, going to teach classes and going on calls and coming on this call today, there's a, there's a temptation for me to, to be nervous or, which is okay to feel nervous, right? Or think like, I better provide more value or things like that. But if I'm showing up like humbly, face on the floor, like wanting to serve people, think, just wanting to contribute, we show up as a contributor. All of that just kind of cannot stand in that environment. And it's just not, it's not created, service isn't created to stand and not, you know, in with, in that kind of environment. So when you show up with humility and we're just wanting to contribute and saying, what can I, how can I add value? Takes it away from being about you. And it empowers you to do things that function, to provide stuff that helps.
Absolutely. So when you are, when you're feeling stuck and worried about whether or not you're going to do something right, if you know you're helping, right? If you know where your heart is, if you know that you're doing this because this person deserves to know the truth.
Right.
Then you do it, right? You just do it, right? It releases the blocks. That's so beautiful.
And it's about what they need. It's about what they need, not about what we want to provide. You know, it's fun to make a beautiful, you know, infographic, but they probably need something that like doesn't take a lot of ink that they can print really quick, you know, and tape up next to their oil cabinet. You know, like, let's make things that are functional for people. And they can feel, it can also feel much more, I've learned, it can feel a lot more personal. You know, when, when things are just simple, people feel a lot more seen when it doesn't feel like I'm putting on a show of my brand, but instead, I'm, I'm providing something. But instead I'm, I'm providing something for you functional, right? Um, I can have a beautiful cookbook or I can have the index card that my godmother wrote me a recipe on thirty years ago that's covered in spots. They both work. You know, and so we wanna provide something to people that works.
Yeah, absolutely. So let's get into this. You guys, if you have any questions for Janelle, if you are, it's actually a really great question from Monica here. Um, if, if you have any questions for Janelle, please add those to the Q and A. If you have any questions about Get Oiling, feel free to do that as well. So Monica's asking, uh, she's a brand new, uh, brand partner. She's a star. She's only got ten members. Uh, A, Monica, you're new and you have ten members. Congratulations. Can, can we talk about that? Uh, so she asked, would it be worth signing up with Get Oiling? Should I wait until I have a higher rank, let's say executive? So, um, how, how would you answer that, Janelle? Cause I know you started with us at Senior Star, right?
Yes. So I started at Senior Star. Unfortunately, I don't remember what my organization size was at that time, to be honest. But, um, I, I remember when I began as a distributor, trying to use the Young Living Back Office as a, um, customer, it, we call it a CRM, like a customer relationship manager. Um, and it just wasn't functional. And so if I could go back, I personally, for me, I would have started using it right away because I feel like it would have helped me to create those rhythms in my business that I have now a lot earlier and made it a lot more seamless for me to add new members as I went. So when I migrated over to Get Oiling, um, you know, I was, I'm certain I had at least a hundred people in my organization maybe. Um, and so, you know, it was, it was a more to go back and like try to add things and things like that. So if it first, I can only speak for me, Monica, if it were me, I would have started at the beginning so that I could have that rocking and rolling as I went forward.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. And we do have, if you go to our homepage, GetOiling.com, if you look at the different plan options, you make sure you expand to see all of them. We do have seed and starter plans that are as low as seven or ten dollars a month US uh, that afford you the opportunity to have that contact manager like Janelle mentioned. So you could start with the simplest, most functional stuff first. Uh, of course, if you start to feel inclined to do more, we are there to expand with you. So if that's where you chose to start, I think that would be extraordinarily helpful for you. Um, of course, you know, once you start wanting to build a private member area and things like that, then you'd wanna be looking at a, a, a different level of the business. But I think everybody here today would be well served with this functional approach in the business to, uh, to just start using saved replies like Janelle was talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and using your contact manager.
Yeah, and I, um, uh, one thing that I didn't really realize was gonna be such a big benefit of having Get Oiling when I first started was being able to put prospects into Get Oiling because in my Young Living Back Office, I only have customers. But in Get Oiling, we can add anybody that we want that we're working with and most of us um, already have a position of wellness, uh, influence in wellness in our, whatever community that we have. And so people are talking to us about wellness and different things. And so we can add, um, people that are prospects to Get Oiling so that we can send them valuable information all in one go. So I, that has been something that has been really great for me to have that I didn't really realize until I got in there. Oh my goodness, this is a huge time saver. It's very effective. It's helping me be more effective and reach people. Um, so that's something to consider too, that it's not only about the people that you have in your organization right now, but the people that are coming and that you are currently, um, working on helping bring into the organization.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. I, I think like especially where we start having this conversation about, um, about overwhelm, it's really important to remember that the whole point of using Get Oiling, especially at the start, is to help support a currently functioning, uh, operation in your business, right? So if you have ten customers, eight customers, a hundred customers, you need to know when it's time to follow up with them. You need to be able to simply send a single email out to all of them. So you aren't trying to send a hundred different emails or ten or eight different emails, right? Very basic functions that should already be relatively familiar to you, either through using the VO or using, you know, other basic tools like spreadsheets or just, you know, your email or your DMs or something like that. So I mean, if, if we understand that we start with that, then it automatically is no longer overwhelming because we're just using Get Oiling to do a thing we already know that we need to do, right?
Exactly.
So, um, a couple of good questions here. There was one in the chat. Please try to make sure you guys that you put into the Q and A so we don't miss this. But I did see one, um, about your niche. Do you feel like you have sort of, uh, a niche that you are speaking to?
I didn't see that question. Um,
And how did you find it, if you have one?
There's a lot of talk about niches. And, um, interestingly enough, I think your niche is find you. Um, it's your job, instead of, um, trying to create your niche or manufacture a niche, um, it's your job to keep, put your ear to the ground and see what is coming to you. And so what I mean by that is, what are the, what are, I bet everybody on this call right now, if you are in the realm of wellness, has been asked a certain question at least twice, if not three times or more. Maybe you are asked about your infections with kids. Maybe, you know, maybe that's some, maybe you're asked about skincare. Maybe you're asked about, what did you use when you got the Rona? Okay, I don't know. Like it could be, what do you use for your laundry? There's probably something that you've been asked at least twice, if not three or more times. That's your niche coming to you. I think it finds you. Um, because whatever people are drawn to you for is what you're providing. And so, um, that is, I, that's how I found it, um, is just serving people and seeing, okay, this is what people are asking for. Um, you know, everyone needed help with breathing in the past year and, um, I had as, I recovered asthmatic and so I've shared about that here and there and so people just know that. And they posted a picture, you know, my, with my kids using a nebulizer and now people come to me for lung support a lot. You know, so I don't know if that answers your question. I hope it does, um, about finding your niche. My niche is, um, mostly keeping families strong using natural means. Um, and then also I do a lot of hormone support for women.
Awesome. Another question here. Do you use a to-do list? Cheryl says, when I have many ideas at once, it would take me a long time to start all of these projects and then check in with each one. So what workflow would you use when you're creating saved replies or follow-ups, for example?
Okay, that's a great question. I love this question and I share this tip. I honestly wish I remember where I got it because not original to me. I think it was in like a Maxwell training, but I don't really know. Um, but, um, I share this with anyone that I'm mentoring and that is, I do something called a six list. Because most of us are not just at Young Living Brand Partners. We are also, uh, spouses. We're also managers of our homes. We have another job. Uh, you know, we have volunteer roles. We have whatever is going on. Maybe we homeschool our children, whatever. And so we have a lot of boxes that we function in, a lot of pans in the fire. And so I do something called a six list for my day. And that is every, um, evening, I write down the six things that I want to accomplish the next day in no particular order. And they are across all of the avenues that I function in. My church, my family, my home, homeschooling my children, um, my home, my business, everything. And I write down those six priorities because I think a lot of times when we're trying to grow sustainably and serve people sustainably, um, we forget that we need to triage our priorities. And sometimes a pri, a pri, a business priority is gonna, like for example, I have four children in my house right now and I homeschool them. This is taking priority for this hour, being here with you, providing the value, whatever value I can offer to you for this hour. Doesn't mean that my children are less important than you, right? Um, it means that this, we're, we're triaging priorities and places that we, um, function in and ways that we serve. So my list is six things every evening and, um, that are the next day's priority across everything. So if I, I wanna make a save reply, it's gonna go on the list somewhere and then I get to those things when I have time blocks that I'm gonna be able to do them in. Um, and so that's what I use. And then as far as like, you also mentioned, you have a lot of ideas, just brain dump, I brain dump them. I type faster than I can write and I, I can usually keep up with my brain if I type. So I just, every once in a while, I'll pull out my, my Word document and I'll just brain dump all my ideas um, into a Word document and then they're ready when I wanna work on something. Just, I hope that helps, Cheryl.
And so, so you would be from that brain dump document, let's just say, for ideas for the tech stuff, you would maybe grab one thing from that because you've got some time and you wanna make sure you do that tomorrow. Is that what you're doing? You're basically using that as a source for your to-do list?
Exactly. So if I, if it's not on the top of my head already, something that I wanna do, usually there's things that are right on the edge, like I wanna get my newsletter out. Or I want to create an event, cause I'm doing an event next week. Using Get Oiling's registrations for events has been a game changer for me, um, in getting people to come to classes. Um, so it, you know, usually it's up on the front, but if I'm like, okay, I don't, I need to know what to do next. Sometimes we go, I don't know what to do. Have all these IPAs and I don't know what I to do, then I'll go to my brain dump and I'll pick the one that resonates with me and throw that on my list.
I love it. I love it. There's a book as well. I don't know if you're familiar with this one, Janelle, called The One Thing. Um, if you ever feel overwhelmed with like to-do lists and stuff, it's a phenomenal book for that purpose. All right, another question. Yeah, yeah, the one thing. All right. So the other thing is, Monica says, at my age and being technologically challenged, what if I can't figure out the setting up of everything? How difficult is it to navigate it? So, um, yeah, can we, can we talk a little bit about sort of how you felt coming in? Maybe thinking back to the beginning of when you decided to get started with us.
Yeah, well Monica, I think you can. And I don't, um, what's really important, I hope that you could take away from today is that you don't need to use everything in there. When I opened up Get Oiling for the first time, I went, whoa, I didn't know what a save reply was. I didn't, I had only just learned what a landing page was, what are vaults? And I ignored all of that and went to find the one small thing that I wanted it to do. Remember the salad bar example? What are you looking for? Ignore the stuff that you don't like or need or want. Focus in and grab what you do want. And I'm gonna tell you, um, uh, I think, and I, seriously, I have worked in so many different, um, companies and that provides service and things like that. And Get Oiling is the absolute best customer service I've ever encountered. They answer your questions. They help you. Their help section is so step by step and it, it will literally sit open while you click and navigate through the site and do the one thing that you're trying to do. And they're so helpful when you message them and ask them like, hey, I'm trying to find this or that, um, that I am confident that you can do it. And I would definitely stick to the, to the most basic piece that you wanna learn. Saved replies are great. Sending an email to your whole team, that's a great place to start as well. Um, I'd hope that helps.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for that. All right. We do have trainings as well and if you ever needed help to walk through, we, we offer a lot of different kinds of opportunities. Uh, it's really kind of show and tell as well. Uh, Rebecca wants to know, uh, where folks can find that nebulizer recipe.
Oh, um, hmm, what's the best way to, what's the best way to get it to everybody? Um, we have a, um, well, why don't you? I didn't think about that question. You can message me, um, and I will send it to you. How about that? You can message me. My, um, email is hello@livingwellwithjanelle.com. I'll put it in the chat.
Here's another really good question. Um, Allison is asking if you use the to-do list in Get Oiling? If so, how do you keep that from getting out of hand with too many things?
So I do not use the to-do list in Get Oiling and it's on my to-do list to learn how to use the to-do list. But at this time, um, I don't feel I have the time to sit down and adopt a new, um, way of doing a to-do list. And so I'm not choosing that part of the salad bar and it's working for me, um, fine. So, um, no, I'm not. And I think I would love to, but that's one of the beautiful things about Get Oiling is that you can use the pieces that, um, are serving you and you can just skip the pieces that aren't gonna serve you yet.
Beautiful. Uh, Carrie says, I'm, I'm challenged with tech stuff. I don't know how to use the Word document and how to go back and check it again. So depending on the, the platform that you're using or, you know, whether you're using a mobile device, uh, or what your preferences, mobile device, desktop, tablet, um, and what kind of operating system it is, most, um, no matter what type of, of device you're using, most devices have some kind of notes, application or feature. And so if you can just maybe give it a name that you can remember, um, you know, call it my brain dump or whatever you would call it, something more creative. And then just use the search feature. So if you do this on your phone or on your computer, then you'll be able to just search for that and you'll be able to find it. Another thing that you can do, if you're on a desktop or laptop type device, you could save that file to the desktop. So you could always just open it up. Uh, and then of course, uh, if you are using a smartphone or a tablet device, you can just go to the search feature to pull it up. I really love using the Notes app, um, just for things that you want to just go straight to. Um, if you're on Apple devices, those will read across different devices if you're using iCloud. So, um, I believe you can do it, Carrie. I believe you can do it. Yeah. Um, okay, let's see. So, uh, uh, real quick one here from Amanda. What's your Instagram handle?
I just added it. It's at Janelle M Bass, Facebook and Instagram. I would love to see you guys there for sure.
Awesome. Okay, so, uh, Gigi, I wanna get to your question here in just a second. It's a little bit more complicated. So hold on just a second here. Cheryl asked, um, very, very helpful and a game changer. Could you give a specific example for if I'm starting saved replies? How to complete three saved replies, like a monthly promo, my favorite oils this month? How can I help you? Um, if you, if those were sort of your, these are the saved replies I know I wanna have, what would be your sort of approach to getting them done?
So Cheryl, are, um, are you asking how to get them done, like a strategy for getting them finished? Or are you asking like, these are the ones that you want, saying these are the ones you wanna do? Or are you saying like, what are some ideas that you would use for a save reply? Workflow, got it. Okay, so I would pick the one that is the most, um, valuable to your people. Not the one you feel you wanna do the most or the one that, um, you know, feels the most important to you. But what's, what is the most valuable to them right now that they can utilize? And then break that into the bare, most bare bones that you possibly can. Go into your saved replies, start a saved reply. Um, here are the oils I'm loving this month. What do you think, subject? If that's all you have, do that. Go in there and do that. And then, oh, look, we're getting it right now. Perfect. And then I would save it. That's it. And then when you have time, you can come back and you can add more. And you can say, hey, um, first name, because we have these really great little tags where you can input some, it'll automatically input someone's name. So look at that. You can actually search, just search it right at the top. You don't even have to remember where to find it. That's awesome. So hey, so-and-so, here are some oils that I'm using this month and really loving over the summer. I thought of you and thought that you might want to see these and use them too. And then you can list them and how you're using them. Um, that's it. It goes super simple. Don't worry about photos. Don't worry about bolding things. You can go do that later if you like. Um, but give people the information.
And I, and so look, right, right now, I'm just, I'm just gonna make this list. Uh, so hope you love these as much as I do. All right. So I, that's all the time I had. Okay. So I'm done. Save. Now, now, when you wanna go back and do this again, go back and search for it. Oils I'm loving. There's your saved reply right there. Now, we're gonna go to, um, we're gonna link these, right? I'm not, not gonna do images, not even gonna fool around with that. Uh, we're going to go over to here and we're going to go to Young Living's website. I'm gonna show you how to do a leaf link. It's real simple. So Valor was the first one on this list, so let's go over and search Valor. All right, I'm gonna grab the single Valor link. I clicked it. I'm copying this link up here. And we're coming back over here and I'm, I'm just gonna put the Valor word in. It's all the time that I have. This is the leaf link right here, right? That's going to make this in case somebody is maybe not your, um, your customer yet. This is the link. It just popped in right up there at, at the top. I'm gonna copy that link and then actually delete this. All right, so Valor. I'm gonna make a link. I'm pasting that new link in here. Insert. That's done. Okay, that's all the time I had. I had five minutes to do this. I'm gonna come back later and do the same thing for Mint.
Yep, exactly.
And then maybe another week later, when I've got some time to really go into this again, I will maybe go back here and I will copy this image. I'm gonna save this image to my downloads. And maybe I wanna make it pretty in camera, maybe I don't. Um, or you know what? I might just leave it exactly as it is because all they really need from me is the info and not, you know, a redesign, reinvention of the wheel of Young Living's graphic design.
And especially, I, I love that. And especially if they're already a customer. Um, they, you know, they're gonna go into their, their thing. They, you can send it to them as is. I mean, if you're gonna link one, I'd probably link all of them, but, um, you know, you can send them that list as is. It's functional. So when someone texts you or emails you and says, I don't know what to order this month, what should I be ordering? My, my loyalty rewards goes into my My, my loyalty rewards goes in tomorrow, what do you think about this? And I go, oh my gosh, I just made a list. I'm gonna email it to you right now. Shoot me back any questions that you have. When you get them, I'll tell you how I'm using them. And you can send them that reply, it's already functional.
Yep, there you go. Another tip as well for saved replies is chances are, if you need a saved reply for something, it's in your outbox. You've sent this information before. This is something you can go grab from social media, from your DMs, or from your text messages, or from emails that you've replied to previously, and copy and paste that information into a saved reply. You've probably said this stuff before.
So true. So true. That's great.
All right, let's see. So I want to make sure. Okay, so Monica, let's, let's go take a look real quick here, because I'm gonna need to demo to, to share with Gigi as well. So, real quick, Rebecca, you want to show the email saved reply again? Yeah, sure, it's, it's right here, and you can, of course, catch the replay as well. You know, that's basically it. Here are some oils I'm using this month and loving for the summer. Thought of you, thought you'd love to see them and use them too. Here's the links. Hope you love these as much as I do. And then, of course, you know, just as you have time, use this little leaf link. Pop in any link from the Young Living website, and it's going to include your enroller and sponsor number in here. And just swap these texts out, make them links. And then you're done. You can do this with all kinds of things. Okay, so Monica, you had a question, do you design the landing page for us, specifically for each person? So, no, but here's a really cool thing. Even if you're getting started with us at seed or starter plans, are, are, you know, most affordable, very beginning, if you're just starting out, and that's where you want to start with us, these are customized to you without you really needing to know how to do anything. So we do have landing pages that are already ready and made and useful for you. But if you go into your Good Oiling site after you sign up, and you simply fill out the, sorry, it's the My Story and Photo. If you just go to My Story and Photo, add your picture, add a little bit of your own testimony here. What's gonna happen is, is when you show a landing page, maybe a pre-made one. So let me go to Create Landing Page. Let's use, here we go, here's the pre-made landing page templates. So maybe unveil the secret for healthy living. I just want to use one that's already made. So I'm gonna use that. Right? It's already done. I'm gonna make sure that I save it. This is gonna be a sample page, just call it sample page. And I'm gonna save and view it. And it's going to look customized to you, because your story and photo is already in the system. Right? So this already looks like you've done something really cool here, right? And you can attach this to your built-in website themes, of which we have multiple versions, depending on the markets that, the market that you're in, and we are global and globally compliant. So people can put this information in, and then go to a pre-built website that's already ready, and it's curiosity generating. If you have your story here, it'll show up there. If you have events, if you're using us for events like Janelle does, then, then of course, those can show up on, on the page as well, on the next page on that built-in theme. So, yeah, there, there's actually, it's not done for you. If you would like to hire our team to build stuff for you, that's definitely an option. But there's stuff that's just out of the box ready. Like, you don't need to know how to do anything, other than follow a couple of simple instructions. Okay, so we've got those done. Now, Gigi, I want to get to you. And then, also, Janelle, before we go, there's something that you made that you want to share, that we, we need to get to as well. But Gigi, thank you for your patience. I'd like to learn how to direct an opt-in in an email series, to show something that confirms it, as opposed to just going to my homepage when they clicked on it in their email. Okay, okay, yeah, so Gigi, this is actually quite simple. So we're talking about, if somebody opts in for an email series, depending on how you have this set up. So let's just pretend, for instance, you've got a landing page, but instead of unveil the secret for healthier living, it's sign up for my Essential Oils 101 email class, or something like that. And then you've got a campaign that they're going to receive, so maybe it's a Grow Workspace. You know, Grow Workspace, Class, Daily Routine for Living Clean, fine, okay, how about that one? So they're gonna receive that. Where you want them to go next, I typically recommend it's gonna be like a, like a confirmation page, right? So in that case, you would be sending them to a confirmation page. Right? So we'd go to a confirmation page right here, if you have one. We do have some trainings where we talk about, you know, more about funnels and things like that. I would recommend that you go to getoiling.com/getleads to really get the full picture of how you can plug a simple funnel together. But that's how you, you redirect them, going right here. The other option, this depends on how you use this, is if you're using an automation to trigger a campaign, there is one additional step that you need to make sure that you are setting up in your automation. So I'm going to contact settings and then to automations here. When you're creating an automation, maybe they're clicking a link in an email, right, that you send out. And then from that email, now they get a new campaign, right? So, you know, this will be add to campaign, whatever the campaign is, right? And then we're gonna add them to the campaign here, whichever one it is. Okay, we'll use that one. Then you want to go under advanced options, and then after they click that button, they're going to the confirmation page, right? Hey, I just sent you something, check your email. If you don't see it in the next five to 10 minutes, get in touch. Here's the contact button, right? And so that way, people know what to expect next. So just always try to make sure as much as possible where you are getting people to opt-in to different stuff on your site, that you're going, you're sending them to a confirmation page, so that they know to expect to check their email, and so that if they don't see something from you, they also know what to do next. That is, I hope that answers. And you also said, the blog area, I thought I had done it correctly during the 90-day challenge. I wanted to link the Young Living blog. If I do this, would I be able to send an email from my blog to my customers? And the answer to that is yes. You are still able to, to, to send out any information that you have. Now, I am gonna be, if you're gonna be joining us on the Attract Well office hours in an hour, or a little over an hour from now, I am gonna be talking about blogging and setting that up today. So, but without getting too far into it, because I do want to make sure we can share Janelle's resource today, Gigi. What I'd recommend here is that, once you, you have that, that blog post imported into your blog, then you're just gonna want, you're gonna want to grab the link to whatever the blog post is, and then send it out via an email, a saved reply, or what have you. As opposed to just using the, I wrote a blog, and then when you're publishing the blog, you're also emailing it out. Because that way, you, you can actually filter your list and stuff that we're gonna talk about in the next hour, where we get a little bit more complex in what we're doing. Okay, Rebecca, can you share your system for sharing Get Oiling with our team? And if someone is non-Young Living and wants Attract Well? So we do have, really simply, and I'll show you this quickly. If you want to share your site, like, if you want to share, it's always up here at the top in your dashboard. So if you want to go here, you can actually refer, and that's right here where it says my referral link. You can refer your customers and team, you share a half month, like, both of you get a half month off when you do that. If you are someone who wants to incorporate sharing, Get Oiling, and Attract Well in a more strategic way, you can get in touch with us, if, you know, you're interested in joining as an affiliate. That is definitely an option as well. So you can get in touch with us if you want to learn more about that. But yeah, you just want to, you share my site and go to my referral link. And then, again, if, if you see yourself making more than just a couple referrals, and you want to actually be a referral partner, then get in touch, and we'll, we'll connect you with the details. All right, so Janelle, you created something that you're sharing with us today, right?
Yes, I did. I, I just wanted to give you something that was functional, that was working for me, to hopefully bless you and help you to be able to move forward and, and serve people like you're wanting to serve them. And so one of the challenges I hear across TYL a lot is, it's hard to get me, for me to get to people to classes, and I'm doing them for free, and they still don't want to come, and I'm offering all these things. And, I mean, I've been doing this for many years, and, you know, sometimes just one person comes, two people. But I was having a hard time getting people to classes for free. I started charging $5 a class, and the first time that I charged for it, I had 19 people register on my Get Oiling event and come to the class. So I don't know why people like to pay money, but they do, they want to spend money. So I created a super simple, even if you're not charging for the class, if you want to do a, a free class, I love using Get Oiling for my in-person events. I know many of us grow that way with in-person events. They really have been the bread and butter of my business. And being able to use Get Oiling to sign people up for the events, and then put them in as prospects or new customers into my system, and all of that has been amazing. So I'm using them, Get Oiling as registration, has been really helpful for getting people to the classes. And then also, it puts them into my Get Oiling customer prospect list, and I know who's coming and all of that. So I set up a share bundle for you guys that has a invitation page. It has that for what I call an essential experience, it's an Essential Oils 101. All of it, you can use all of it, you can change any, anything that you want, you can use anything you want in there. All the wording and stuff is a gift to you. And then, when you click the button, it will take them to a Get Oiling event page that's in the bundle as well, where people can register themselves for your event, so you can see exactly who has signed up and has registered. And then, it is attached to a campaign with one email that sends them an email immediately after they register that says, hey, you're, you know, you're in, thanks for registering. I can't wait to see you on this date, at this time, in this place. I left those blank for you to fill in. And then if you would like to, you can add more to that campaign, of course. But again, I want just functional, really, and to be, and to just be super transparent with you guys. We could have done all this with just the event. We don't need the campaign email, and we don't need the page. But I wanted to make it pretty for you and give you a little extra, so I hope that helps you guys.
Awesome. And this, Beat Exhaustion and Feel Energized, is this something that you send out after? Or is that, is that something that you wanted, you may want to, like, adjust your bundle? Is that something you wanted to include? It could be, you know what I think it is? You know what? I, I think you have it attached to the page, and because it's attached to the page here, yeah. So you just want to go back to the page that you're sharing and just take this off of it. And then, and then you'll be fine going forward. Awesome. Yeah, thank you for this, and I hope you guys put this to use. There's one more question here, Barbara, I want to make sure we answer here, and then I want to honor everybody's time and be on our way. And, and you guys, let us know how excited you are, and thank Janelle for sharing that amazing resource for, for you to use on your site for your events. Barbara, you'd like to know the difference between Get Oiling and Grow Workspace? So we work together, and we work together really well. So Get Oiling is the, the system that runs, that helps you run your business. And in order to run your business, as a Young Living brand partner, you need to be in a lot of communication with people. A lot of, a lot of the times, that's educational information that you're communicating to them. And if you don't want to have to put on your oily professor hat and write everything yourself, and make things pretty, and come up with all the classes and all the content, that's where you go to Grow Workspace. All right, so Grow Workspace is the content for your site and your system. We are the system that houses the content and gets it out to your people. So they would write, for instance, an email sequence that you can get that resource bundle, just like we have a resource bundle from Janelle today. You can get a resource bundle from Grow Workspace. It's a pre-written email class on Nature Red, maybe, right? And now you have that. You don't have to go and try to figure out how to send three different emails at different times of the day, or whatever, to whoever needs to see it. You can set it up to where it automatically sends out on your behalf, using your Good Oiling system. So they are the content, and then we are the delivery system, and we work really, really, really well together. So we are two separate things that just go really well together. Okay, perfect. You guys, I am so glad that we got to sit and, and get all of this amazing time and insight from Janelle today. And I hope that you got a lot of inspiration from this. I hope that you are excited to move forward in a new way. Yeah, so Rebecca, the resource bundle, if you scroll up in the chat, it's, it's here. And then, of course, we'll send it out in the description and the replay for today's call as well. So be on a, be on the lookout in your email for that. Janelle, any closing thoughts from you, anything else that you'd like to share as, before we go?
I believe in you guys. If you're here on this call, it's because you can do it. Pick one thing, break it down to the smallest functional piece, and do it. And you're gonna serve people so, so well. I'm so proud of you for doing what you're doing.
Awesome. And we are so grateful for you to be here and to be a part of this community. And we're grateful for all of you for being present here today and being a part of this mission to change the world for the better, right? So let's go and do this, one step at a time. And remember, as Janelle said, this is about sharing the truth with people who need to hear it. It's not about getting everything right and looking exactly a certain way all the time. It's just about getting the word out. So if we can just get to that point and work simply as she's shown us how to do, we can get so much done. All right, thank you again so much, Janelle, and we look forward to seeing you guys on the next live call. Bye, everybody.